Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, September 17th, 2012. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, there is one item that I need to add. Under Human Resources, we're going to add board appointments. And we have board appointments that will be made to the Planning and Zoning Board for District Three and also the Development Authority for District Two. With those two items being added to the agenda, I'm looking for a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stameen, and a second by Mr. Preston. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. The first item on the agenda this morning is a proclamation for No Text on Board Pledge Day. And I'm going to read a proclamation, and then we're going to look at a short video, and then we have some officers here from the Traffic Unit with Henry County PD that will come forward to receive the proclamation. This is naming September 19th, 2012, as No Text on Board Day in Henry County, Georgia. Whereas in 2010, the state of Georgia joined many other states in passing a law prohibiting texting while driving and making it illegal for teens to use their phones at all while behind the wheel of a vehicle. And whereas despite the new laws being passed across the nation and studies that show that 97% of respondents know the dangers of texting while driving, people continue to do it. And whereas Henry County alone sees numerous accidents that are related to distracted driving caused by actions as texting, and whereas the nation's statistics show that texting drivers are 23 times more likely to be involved in an accident, and in 2010, 3,092 people were killed in crashes, and an estimated additional 416,000 were injured in motor vehicle crashes involving a distracted driver. And whereas by continuing to educate people about the dangers of texting while driving and sharing the simple yet vital message that no text is so urgent that it's worth diverting attention from the road and risking lives in the process, it can wait. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that September 19th, 2012, be text designated as No Text on Board Day, during which time all citizens are encouraged to take the pledge never to text while driving. Together, we can all have a part in making sure that no more lives are lost. The 17th day of September 2012 by the Henry County Board of Commissioners. And we do have a short video presentation before we make the proclamation. The full video will be available on Channel 14, and I encourage you to take the opportunity to, for yourselves as well as your children, to view the entire video. It very much drives the point home of the dangers of texting and driving.
Ashley would text hundreds of messages every day. That was the way we kept in touch. We would definitely text more than we talked.
Mariah was a multitasker, extraordinary. Could text better than anyone I know.
She could be having one conversation with me, completely focused.
While having a text conversation with somebody else.
When you do something 7,000 times a month, you tend to learn where those 26 letters are.
We would be at school, at home, movies, bowling, driving.
Not even looking at her phone.
Just simple.
insignificant.
Useless little whatever it may be.
About anything and everything.
Just a way to pass the time.
It didn't matter where we were, we were constantly texting. This is my sister. She was looking at my message that I had just sent her. When she looked up, she had clipped the median on the left-hand side of the road. Her truck flipped, and as it was flipping, she was actually ejected through the driver's side door. And she landed in the ditch about 300 feet from her truck. People will tell you over and over again, it's not your fault. But knowing that you were the person that she was talking to when she was killed. Just having a highway patrol officer write in a report that a text message was sent at 12:05 is the reason that she is dead is not something that will ever go away. If I could talk to her one last time, I would just say I'm sorry. This is her cellphone that she used in the accident. Four little letters. That's what killed her.
Get your tissues out when you watch the rest of that video. It's very, very moving and really drives the point home. I also want to mention too, before we present this proclamation, that our governor is forming a commission on teen driving. And he is looking for teenagers who would like to participate on this special commission the results of texting and driving after working some of the accidents that they have that will help to educate other teens about the dangers of texting and driving. to work on a daily basis. We have some of the information about that available for if you have teenagers that you Julie, thank you for that presentation. All right, at this time, we're going to move on to presentations of certificates to the think would like to participate. And then there's also a Take the Pledge form that I would encourage you to pick up as senior case managers in senior services. This is going to be presentation day, I think. you leave too, that will commit to not texting and driving. We've got a number of those to make this morning. And Susan, are you here? And I believe those are available duly on the table as you leave today. Would you like to come up and talk a little bit about the individuals that are going I encourage you to pick one of those up. to be receiving these certificates? And so I know we have some officers here from Henry County PD that will receive the
Three of our senior case managers.
proclamation if you come board at this time.
Kathy Smeath.
Cheryl Armour.
And Lynn Witt.
Would you all come up, please?
They successfully completed all five modules required to receive the Boston University's Foundation in Aging Program. They worked very hard in addition to maintaining their workload, and I'm very proud of them. This was a $500 program that ARC funded for us under a pilot. And out of 66 who began the program, I think 50 completed it. So I'm very proud of these three ladies. They go into the homes and they assess the clients that we serve, and this will give them the tools to even do a better job, if they could. They both have a lot of, all of three have a lot of experience. Anywhere from 20 years to...
What, eight years?
So I'm very proud of these three ladies, and I appreciate you recognizing them today.
We certainly congratulate you on that. And if you would miss over here, we'll present you with your certificates. Mr. Holder?
Ms. Craig, from the time you had been the director until now, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, you surely don't have these numbers, but as far as the caseload that these ladies deal with daily, has it increased, decreased? Can you tell me kind of what it's done in your time as director?
It definitely has increased. Of course, the aging population is increasing. That's the fastest growing population that there is. I guess each lady maintains at least 80 on a caseload. That doesn't mean they're going to be called by all 80 each day, but some are at a higher level of need than others. And they have the ability to go in and to assess them and to place them in the right level of care.
After seeing this video we just saw this morning, and as tearful as it is, and as emotional as it is, I know these ladies can give you stories on cases that they manage and they see here daily right in our county that will absolutely break your heart. So these are not situations that just happen somewhere else. It's right here in our county, and if you ever want to know, just talk to one of those three ladies because they are the people who deal with it daily. And those are conditions that do exist. And I think that needed to go, needed to be said.
Mr. Benman?
I would like to add to that the Mills on Wheels. And I know, and the reason I have not been able to do it for a little while because of some situations going on, but I know that the county manager also delivers Mills on Wheels. And you see a lot of things that are, you know, pretty sad. Pretty sad that the way that some of them, some of our seniors have been treated and what they have to live in, and knowing that they have some opportunities to go to some places is good. So I agree with Commissioner Holder. I mean, we are looking, you know, you guys are doing a great job, or ladies, excuse me, are doing a great job of looking after them. So just, I appreciate what you do.
And I can't say enough good about them. When the call comes in on Friday afternoon at 4:00, that we have a senior member in the community who's hungry and won't have food until Monday, these are the three. And everybody in our department actually starts gathering up food, calling food pantries, gathering money up, and they make sure that no one goes hungry if we're aware of it.
That's awesome, really. I mean, because that goes unseen, and you know, it's what you do for those that can never really do anything back for you. That's what really counts. And I mean, it's real prevalent to those, and those of you who have not had an opportunity to deliver Mills on Wheels, you should try it, you know, once or twice to just ride with someone because it'll, you know, may change your attitude about certain things, but it's just those folks that, you know, they're in need and nobody ever hears about them, but you know, you got you ladies and of course, the ones that do the delivering. And it's, in some cases, it's heartbreaking, really. I mean, and you want to do something, and you, you know, that's what you can do, so...
And they go into environments that are unknown, and they don't carry a gun like a lot of people that I know of. Now, I do know that Kathy has gone through an entire assessment in a home that was other than one that you would want to live in, and she realized she was sitting on something, and it was, it was a gun. Nine millimeter gun. And, you know, if we do feel like there's danger, the police officers, the sheriff's deputies are always willing to go in and to help us and...
Well, I think the worst one that Janice and I ran across, and she called in and I had conversation, is that when we went to deliver, you know, the lady didn't come to the door, and there were some people that we didn't recognize that came to the door. And, you know, the first time, it was okay. And the second time, it wasn't okay because then we said we want to see her. And she was locked in her room in very bad conditions. The lady has since passed away. But made a couple of phone calls and got some things handled with that. And that, you know, that's something that you just don't see. I mean, it's something that happens, but, you know, Janice, my wife, really, she wants to see them. And it might be just that one line that might just have improved a little bit on that lady's last few weeks of living because, I mean, she was in, she was not in a good place with that situation.
Well, I can't say enough good things for these three ladies. I've worked with them a lot of years, and I joined them, actually, they were already in the department, and they are senior services, part of it, a major part.
Thank you.
And I'm going, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask the commissioners if they would like to step over there. Commissioner Stameen is our vice chairman, if you will hand out the plaques as I call the names. Y'all can shake everybody's hand, and then I want to ask you to group together. And we're going to, if you're with the Fire Department, Police Department, or whatever, we're going to bring you up as groups for a photograph. Since there's so many of you, we can't get everybody in one picture. And Julie would like to have photographs of each employee with their plaque or their award. I don't know what you call that. What would you call that?
I think it's a...
It's not really a plaque. It's a major award. We'll call it a major award. And we'll get a photograph of you with that, with your respective groups. So commissioners, if y'all would like to do that?
Let's see, do we start it?
Julie, we start on this closest to the tree or...
Start at the tree.
The tree. The tree, and work your way out. I want to commend all the employees to spend 20 or 25 years in, with the same organization is becoming a rarity these days. And so we certainly want to commend you and thank you for your dedication to the county. And it's because of that that we've been able to provide the quality services that we have to our citizens today. And you are the face of Henry County, and we appreciate everything you do. The first employee this morning with 20 years of service is Rufus Adams. Next, we have Donna Ash, 20 years. Charles Brooks, 25 years. James Birch, 20 years. Michael Cash, 20 years. Michael Cone, 20 years. Kenneth Dawson, 20 years. Gregory Gleaton, 25 years. Dennis Hall, 20 years. John Harper, 20 years. Nancy Harrison, 20 years. Mark Henley, 20 years. James Jones, 25 years. Stan Jones, 30 years. Michael Keigho, 20 years. Bill Lacy, 25 years. Fred Leonard Jr., 20 years. James Lynch, 25 years. John Moore, 25 years. Aleah McCutcheon, 20 years. Chief Glenn Nichols, 20 years. I'm glad she put chief by your name. I wouldn't have recognized you with Glenn. Carl Penn, 30 years. Tracy Richardson, 20 years. David Ritchie, 25 years. Jimmy Spence, 20 years. Kowina Starks, 20 years. All right, what do we have left over there, Commissioner Stameen? Just to make sure we didn't miss anybody. Call the names out loud so we make sure that we didn't... All right, and then the ones on the counter again, so we make sure we didn't miss anybody. Okay. All right, first of all, we'll give everybody a round of applause. All right, and Julie, if you want to call up the groups that are represented here, then we'll do the photographs. All right, we have another presentation this morning, which is the presentation of the first 50 years of Henry County Water Authority. Is anybody here for that?
I think Warren can do that, can't he?
You did say we could cut out.
Yeah, I could, but I don't believe I would do it without my roof.
Oh. All right, well, we'll bypass that item. I guess we can call the Water Authority and see if we can get that on the next agenda. I'm not certain why they're not here this morning, and we'll make sure that they allow you to participate in that, Mr. Holder.
I don't know if any of you have seen the book that this...
It's been put out by that, and I think everyone of us got one, but there's quite a history that goes along with the Water Authority in this county. And as I've said before, they've lived through all of the growth period of Henry County, and there were some visionaries that allowed the growth to be in Henry County. Of course, you couldn't have growth without water, sewer. So I think it'll be a very interesting presentation when they come to do it.
It will be, absolutely. They've done a phenomenal job of planning the water resources, and certainly at the peak of the drought, we're most appreciative that we don't have the same issues that they've had traditionally on the north side of town. All right, we will move on to SPOSS. We have a resolution requesting approval of a budget amendment regarding the Fairview Road Transportation Project. Our presenter is Rocky Romero, SPOSS Transportation Project Director, and that's exhibit number one. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. Fairview Road is a designated SPOSS III major transportation project. Budget amendment in the amount of $1,267,283.61 is needed to cover the construction and related costs. Funding for this budget amendment is available in the SPOSS III East Atlanta at Thurmond Project and also at the East Atlanta at Panola Accounts. Originally, this project had a budget of $13,255,000. Back in 2008, as every district had to do to put on hold $5,775,000 due to going from a budget, a SPOSS budget of 240 to 180 million. Due to that budget, every district had to put that $5,775,000 on hold. District Five at that time put everything on hold on... District Five at that time put everything on hold on Fairview Road. With this budget, if the board approves this budget, the new budget will be a little bit slightly higher of the original. The new one will be $30,286,079. I will take any questions.
See if a board member have a question, comment, Mr. Holmes.
Rocky, I know we've been in the process of a right-of-way acquisition. Can you tell me where we are in that process?
Currently, we have 25 purchase agreements for the project. We expect to complete everything by the end of the year. Currently, we have the Phase One Alphabet, which is the West Panola Phase One of Fairview. So that's where we're at.
Can you give us a timeline of the actual timeline for Fairview Road?
Overall, it's going to probably take, once Alphabet, it's going to take about two and a half years for construction. So if we put it Alphabet February of next year, so two and a half years after that, we should be completed.
So the next step after a right-of-way acquisition, what's next for the actual, the Phase Two Fairview Road?
Correct, actual construction, yes, sir.
Any other questions, Mr. Bowman?
All right, I know this is in District Five, but the roundabout. I've been asked on a number of occasions what we were thinking, and I just want to clear the record, that that is the state. The state wanted to put the roundabout in. I don't know if Bruce has had any calls about it or not. I know that I've certainly been asked on a number of occasions. And I just want to be clear that I'm actually, I felt like that was 100% true. But we were going to put a light and do an intersection improvement, and the state has come up with a roundabout. Is that correct?
That's correct. Originally, it was, of course, SPOS paid for the design and the right-of-way acquisition for that roundabout. But originally, it was supposed to be a signalized intersection. GDOT came to the county and told the county the signal will not be approved, but a roundabout will be approved, and that they will pay for the entire construction of the roundabout. So all the construction for that project's been done by DOT.
Thank you.
You know, I had questions regarding the roundabout, but just recently, I've had a number of people come to me and said that they really like it and that it's cut at least 20 minutes off their commute time from downtown Atlanta to McDonough. So apparently, it's working pretty well.
Mr. Holder.
Rocky, I certainly don't want to continue to beat the dead horse about the GDOT. But I'm glad that Commissioner Bowman did bring this up.
So is Mr. Bowman's fault?
No, I think it's something that the people need to know. And that is, you made a comment that the county was willing to pay from SPOS for a full-blown intersection with signalization. GDOT said no, that they would not participate at any level and wouldn't allow a signal to be placed at that intersection. Instead, they would pay for the entire cost of the roundabout on Highway 155. Rocky, Highway 155 south of McDonough, how many projects has GDOT put any money into?
Not many that I can think of.
Okay, I'm going to give you some prime examples. King Mill and Highway 42, how much did they put into that?
Zero.
Let's go back. Highway 155, US 2342, right here in McDonough. How much did they put into that one?
Zero, sir.
Zero, that was entire county funded. Peaksville and Highway 42 in Locust Grove, how much did they put into that one?
Again, zero.
Zero. So the point I'm making is, it bothers me tremendously that GDOT does not think that there are any projects that qualify south of McDonough. Brian, 155, I'm going to give you some examples. The signalization of I-75 and 155 was paid for with county funds. Bill Gardner Parkway in 155 was paid for with county funds. Walker Road in 155, thank God, it was a $1.1 million project. They bought 100,000, county paid a million. That's the point that I'm making. And I understand you won't have to hear this long, but I'm going to continue to say that as long as I'm here. Because ladies and gentlemen, it is not right. And if you take 155, let's use 155 as an example. Cross over the Spalding County line and look at the passing lanes, bridge improvements, all of the things that have been done on 155, all the way to Griffin. Cross Highway 42 into Butts County, there's four miles of new road that, according to all records, cost the citizens of Butts County not one penny. GDOT funded that entire project, building four miles of road. So I don't know what it is. It may be me, if it is, then I don't have to deal with me long. But I'm telling you now, somebody needs to pay close attention to this because it is, there's no justice or no parity. That's all I have to say, Madam Chair.
And we duly note your comments, and that is certainly correct. There seems to be some discrepancies between money spent on the north side of the county versus the south side. But I will tell you, another project, another problem that we face in transportation projects is called congressional balancing. And that's when the limited funds that Georgia gets for transportation has to be equally distributed per congressional district. And that is why they're taking millions and millions of dollars and building four-lane roads that have absolutely no traffic on them all throughout Georgia and probably never will because of that congressional balancing issue. And that's something that needs to be looked at, especially with transportation dollars becoming as tight as they are right now. Georgia needs to rethink about how those resources are being allocated. And so that's a conversation that's definitely going to have to continue in the future, and a solution has got to be found. Priorities need to be addressed where the priorities are. And it's not going to be in the middle of nowhere in South Georgia. That's not, that should not be where those transportation dollars are being allocated. So hopefully, we'll see some changes through the legislature on that, but only time will tell. Any other questions or comments pertaining to this particular item? If not, we have before us a resolution approving the budget amendment to transfer those funds for the Fairview Road project. And Mr. Holmes, this is in your district, I'll look to you for motion.
So am I.
You have a motion to approve, and seconded by Mr. Preston, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Moving on to Public Works, we have a resolution requesting approval of speed humps in the Creekside Estates subdivision. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, and that's exhibit number two. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Board Members. The required number of residents of Creekside Estates subdivision signed a petition in accordance with our Henry County Speed Hump Ordinance. Staff Henry County DOT verified the requirements of the ordinance that they were met. The locations for each proposed speed hump has been marked on a drawing which is included in this request and reviewed with the homeowners association, I might add. So we would recommend the board approving this request for installation of speed humps.
Any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, there is a resolution before you approving the addition of speed humps. This lies in District Two, and I'll look to Commissioner Preston for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, and a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Moving on to Finance, the first item is a resolution declaring certain county property as junked and authorized to transfer the property to the fire department for use in training exercises. Our presenter is Mike Bush, who is our Finance Director, and that's exhibit number three. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. We have six vehicles from the police department, sheriff's department, and I think DOT that have been involved in wrecks or torn up to the point to where they're actually totaled. And only thing we can really do is sell them for scrap. Or, in this case, with the ordinance, county ordinance section 2-2-35, that you have the power to declare the equipment to be junked, which means it's not feasible to have maintained or repaired or traded in. And what we can do with these vehicles is use the jaws of life and burn the cars and, you know, have some training for our fire department. And then, after all that is done, we can still sell it for scrap. So we're going to get some extra use out of these vehicles. And the, once we sell it, all the proceeds will be deposited back into the general fund, so.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Bowman?
In some cases, the engine blocks are more valuable than some of the other. Is it possible that they check that first and then remove the engine blocks? And then do that, and obviously, cutting it up, whether it's cut up or in one piece, it's still going to be scrap. But I think that's, in working on a couple of old cars that I've been working on, I've come to find out that, you know, blocks are a little more expensive than the other issues. So I'm just curious, I don't know if that's 100% correct or not, but if you would check into that, I think it would be beneficial.
We'll make sure that Fleet comes in and looks at it, and if we can remove the blocks, we'll remove them.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution declaring certain county property as junked, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman to approve, seconded by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a bid for janitorial services. Our presenter is Rod Gray, Purchasing Director, exhibit number five.
Thank you, good morning. As stated, the item I have for, that I'm requesting approval for is sealed bid 1302, which is a sealed bid for janitorial services. And this is an annual contract. The request is to approve the annual contract for janitorial services for the facilities listed in Exhibit B. The original term of the contract is for one year, beginning on October 1st, 2012, and ending on September 30th, 2013, with two mutually agreed upon renewals not to exceed September 30th, 2015. The recommendation is to award the contract to D and B Janitorial of Fairburn, Georgia, with the overall lowest cost of $40,193.52 per year for the facilities listed in Exhibit B, and a slight amendment to the funding source. After further research, there were currently budgeted general fund dollars for this purpose in the 2013 budget. So the referenced funds from the undesignated revenue source from the sale of the surplus vehicles will be handled in a budget adjustment probably on October 15th for other issues related to cleaning with the move we made from a part-time to a full-time employee.
City board member have a question or comments? Mr. Holder?
There's nothing in here for the fire department. Is the fire part of the police and in the public safety building, or what is it?
My understanding is that they did not desire these services, that they handle it internally.
You know, that's interesting because they occupy about half of that building over there, and a third of that entire budget is for the police department in the main building. That's why I asked the question, because $13,000 of the $40,000 is for cleaning the PD and in the fire department. That's the reason I'm asking the question, because fire had nothing in there. And if they do it themselves, and then the PD... Okay, just a question that I have. Yes.
One bill, and they kind of split it between their budgets. But in the past couple of years, it's been put in the police department's budget and not in the fire. And the fire cleans their few little bathrooms they've got, but the joining bathroom is cleaned by the fire department. I mean, by the police department, I'm sorry. That's why it's in there that way.
Do that one more time.
That building, which is, that building which is split by the two different departments.
Correct.
In the beginning, we were basically saying the fire department will clean it for half the year, the police department will clean it for the other half the year. But then the fire department started cleaning their own individual bathrooms that are not part of the grouped bathrooms for both units to use. So the police department took on the whole responsibility and the budget. I mean, it's still, it was, say, $7,000. It was still $7,000, but we put it all on the police instead of in the fire. And that's how that, that's why this was done this way. It shows all fire, all the police department's paying for it, but the fire department will be using those restrooms. It's just not broken out based on the square footage of the building like we had them.
Okay, that's the reason for my question, because it was odd that, basically, the building is split, and they share both wings in why it was going to cost $13,000 for the police and zero for fire. But that makes sense.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the annual contract for janitorial services as referenced in Exhibit B, and also with correction to the funding source as noted by Mr. Gray. And with that, I'll look for a motion to approve. Have a motion by Mr. Holder and a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Planning and Zoning Services, we have an ordinance to repeal, ordinance number 10-19, relating to the registration of telecommunications slash cell tower antennas and billboards. Our presenter is Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, exhibit number four. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, good morning, Board Members. A little bit of brief history behind this ordinance. Back in late '09, '10, staff met with, consultant actually came in and approached county staff about looking at the, requiring about developing a registry for cell towers and billboards and things of that nature. And actually, in 2010, we moved forward with adopting an ordinance and contracting with a consulting firm to help put that registry in place. The ordinance kind of detailed licensing fees and the creation of a database and registry for cell towers and billboards. Since its adoption, we've had several meetings have taken place between county as well as with the consultant. In August of 2011, the then-county manager sent a letter out to the cell tower company only, only the cell tower owners. And since that time, we've actually collected over $100,000 in registration fees. The challenge and some of the issues that we've had since that time have really stemmed from a number of issues within the ordinance that we have not yet implemented, have not been able to go forward with. There's been a number of issues concerning some of the terminology between the ordinance and our ULDC. And we've had, again, several meetings to kind of try to rectify some of those issues. Some of those related to the fee structure, how the fees would be structured, the developing of the registry itself. And again, it's over the last year and a half, we have not really progressed and moved forward with this ordinance. So at this time, staff is recommending that we step back and repeal this ordinance. In so doing, it would have no adverse impact on our current regulations as it concerns cell towers or cell tower applications. But, you know, be that there's been no activity in the last year and a half, we felt it was prudent to go ahead and move forward and repeal this ordinance at this time and refund all the fees associated with it. If the chairman would like, I can read the ordinance relatively short, if you'd like to have that written to the record.
That'll be fine.
The ordinance reads, this is an ordinance of the Henry County Board of Commissioners to repeal Henry County ordinance 10-19 relating to the registration of telecommunications, cell tower antennas, and billboards and for other lawful purposes. Whereas the Constitution of the State of Georgia, approved by the voters of the state in November 1982 and effective July 1st, 1983, provides in Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 1 thereof, that the governing authority of the county may adopt clearly reasonable ordinances, resolutions, and regulations. And whereas OCGA 36-1-20 authorizes counties to enact ordinances for protecting and preserving the public health, safety, and welfare of the population of the unincorporated areas of the county, and whereas the governing body of Henry County, to which the Board of Commissioners, exercised such authority on December 20, 2010, when it adopted the cell tower billboard ordinance, which established new guidelines and fees for the registration of telecommunications, cell tower antennas, and billboards located within unincorporated Henry County, that being ordinance 10-19. And whereas, after careful consideration, the board finds it is the public interest to repeal said ordinance, and now therefore be ordained and resolved, Henry County Board of Commissioners, that effective immediately, ordinance 10-19 is hereby repealed in its entirety, and further resolved that the fees previously collected in connection with the ordinance shall be refunded. And I just want to note that the fees that have been collected have been set in escrow account. Confirmed that with our Finance Director, Mike Bush, earlier today. So again, at this point, we're asking to repeal this ordinance and refund those monies.
Before I ask for comments or questions from the board, I do want to note that Commissioner Bowman will be recusing himself from this item as he, through his business, deals with cell tower companies. And so that would be a conflict for him to participate, and he has recused himself. With that being said, is there any question or comment from any board member on this item? Mr. Holder?
Yes, I'll defer to the county attorney on this one. As far as the agreement with GTRS, this repeal that we're talking about- As far as the agreement with GTRS, this repeal that we're talking about, does it create any liability, or what has GTRS said about our terminating an ongoing agreement?
GTRS has been keenly aware of some of the internal issues and implementation issues that the county has experienced with respect to this ordinance. I can say that we have a very friendly relationship with the principals of that organization. The agreement itself, to answer your question directly, the agreement itself allows either party to terminate within 90 days, with 90 days' advance notice. We don't have any type of ongoing or inherent legal liability, because the contract has never been executed in any form. They've not done any work pursuant to that contract. In fact, they have been working throughout this time period that Michael Harris speaks of, to try to revise it or tamping down some, so they've been aware, and they've not done anything that would be in furtherance in the contract such that we would have any liabilities. So I don't anticipate there being any type of problems.
Okay, it was mentioned also by Mr. Harris that we were holding money in escrow on collections of those fees. Now, when that money is returned, is GTRS going to be expecting commissions or fees or that portion of fees, or we returning it all to the one who paid it?
That's a very good question. The money would go, 100% would go back to the payor. The contract with GTRS required the county to transmit monies when the work began that they were going to do to assist in the registration process. Well, that never, that work never occurred, so there was no claim that GTRS has to the money, because they haven't done any work. It's just been sitting, sitting here, and no one's done anything with it, so.
So if there's a potential for liability, those suits, that's where it'll come from?
Perhaps, yes, but I, yes.
Okay.
I hope that won't happen. Like I said, the principals have been very, very decent to deal with, and we've known them for a long time.
And just to further note, Commissioner Holder, you know, they've been aware of the monies that have been collected, and they've made no, they've not reached out to us in requesting any percentage of those fees whatsoever, you know, to date.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution of Henry County Board of Commissioners repealing County Ordinance Number 10-19 relating to the registration of telecommunications slash cell tower antennas and billboards, and I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Holmes and a second by Mr. Preston, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. And the next item is, goes right along with that. This is a resolution requesting authorization to terminate an agreement with Georgia Tax and Regulatory Solutions LLC, and that's handout number one.
Yes, thank you again. As mentioned, this is the consulting firm that was initially hired on to help... Okay, that's fine, that's fine. I'll give you time to step out. This is a firm that was, had been hired on by the county to help administer, in essence, the provisions of that ordinance that was just repealed. And as County Attorney has mentioned, we've been in close contact with them throughout this process, and the agreement that we signed in December of 2010, it does allow for provision to, from either party, to terminate the contract within 90 days' notice. And speaking with the county manager, he indicated that he would like for us to request to see if we can do an immediate termination, but we certainly, if they're not amenable to that, we certainly still adhere to the 90-day provision that's noted in the agreement. So again, this is a resolution requesting authorization to begin the termination process.
Any board member have a question or comment? If not, you have before you the resolution authorizing the termination, and I will entertain a motion to approve it.
Madam Chair.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Preston, a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is under County Attorney. We have a resolution requesting approval process for minutes of executive sessions as required by the 2012 Revised Georgia Open Meetings Act. Our presenter is Latonya Wiley, our county attorney, and that's exhibit number six.
Madam Chair, before you say that, I'd like to apologize to the board, staff, and the attorney, our county attorney, and improperly left. I should have recused myself, but I was actually reading into it, and once I seen where we were going, I just got up and left the room. But I should have recused myself from that, and I apologize to the board for walking out, and also, you know, just for the public to know that there's, you know, it could be a conflict there, and I didn't want to stay in here and be involved in it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Thank you for allowing me to do that.
Good morning, board members. This resolution is largely based on a model resolution prepared by the ACCG organization that assists county governments. In 2012, as you are well aware, the General Assembly enacted broad sweeping changes to the Open Records Act and the Open Meetings Law. Amongst those changes, they, the General Assembly increased the scope of discussion items that can be discussed in executive session, and also require minutes to be taken at every executive session. Those minutes, however, are not public records and will not be public records. The minutes are intended to be a memorialization of what is discussed in executive session, such that if there was ever a dispute or litigation that arose concerning anything that occurred in executive session, the, those minutes would then be turned over to a judge for an in-camera inspection to determine or ascertain whether or not a violation has occurred. So this resolution will simply memorialize what our obligations are under the Open Records Law as amended this past legislative session, and I would ask for your approval on the same.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
I have one.
Mr. Holder?
Ms. Wiley, this could be moved, because based on the new leadership, there are not going to be any backdoor dealings and backroom meetings. There won't be a need for executive session, so it might not even, we don't even need this.
It's very important to note that the law that allows the board to go into executive session doesn't prohibit those items from being discussed in public session. So it will be up to the governing authority to determine whether or not it wants to discuss that.
But if they discussed them out here, it would not be executive, so you wouldn't have the need for this.
That's correct, sir.
That's my point.
That's correct.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution regarding review and approval of minutes of executive session as required by the 2012 Revised Georgia Open Meetings Act, and I'll look for a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bowman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to human resources, we have a resolution requesting adoption of the Henry County Employee Health and Wellness Policy. Our presenter is Tara Everhart, Director of Human Resources, exhibit number seven. Good morning.
Good morning, members of the board. I bring before you today a resolution as a requirement of a recipient of the wellness grant from ACCG. It is one of the stipulations that the county adopt a wellness policy and have that implemented and approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Any questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution to... Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Preston?
Tara, the only question I had was, is this, because I know a lot of, you know, when we do benefits and other things in the future, there's discounts that the providers, if we have wellness plans and our employees go for physicals, or is that kind of, we're trying to set the groundwork to where we're going to implement some of that in the coming months?
Yes, sir. We have several programs that we're going to be implementing, which we hope will improve the wellness. As one of the things you mentioned about the wellness, as far as the insurance, those benefits are free as far as well visits as a recipient with the insurance. So with that in turn, with the wellness programs that we have in place, we hope that it will reduce the county's insurance for the upcoming open enrollment, which will be for June of 2013.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Stamey?
Tara, how much did we receive last year?
Five thousand.
And the year before that was 5,000?
No, I think it was actually 20,000.
I thought, I remember, somewhere around 20,000 to 25,000. Okay.
Any more questions? If not, there's a resolution before you to approve and adopt the Henry County Employee Health and Wellness Policy, and I entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Preston, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda... Yeah, okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, we have two board appointments, and the first one is planning and zoning, and Commissioner Stamey has an appointment he would like to make to the vacant District III seat.
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to make a motion, but Mr. Barnes is not here today, but we have discussed this appointee, but Mr. Jim Risher will fill a vacancy in the Zoner Advisor Board.
We have a motion to appoint Jim Risher as District III on Planning and Zoning Board, and a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next appointment is on the Development Authority for District II. Commissioner Preston?
Yes, I'd like to appoint John Bozeman. He also is not here today, because he's actually, he apologized, he's going to be traveling for business, but I think when the county sees what connections and relationships John has across the state, huge asset for Henry County. Quick example, John was trying to figure out if he wanted to do this, so I got him to do a dashboard tour with Bob White as we went through the community, and I was amazed hearing them talk about relationships and, you know, playing the name game. I think it's going to be very helpful for the county, and that's why Chairman and I talked about it, and we said, let's hurry up and get him on there before he changes his mind.
Before he changes his mind. Excellent choice, Mr. Preston. So we have a motion on the floor to appoint John Bozeman. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. And we're going to back up on the agenda, and we're going to pick up an item that was listed for earlier, and that is a presentation by the Henry County Water Authority for the first 50 years, and Roger Birch is here, and he's going to make that presentation to us this morning.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize for not being here at the time it was originally on the agenda. I think actually Lindy Farmer was planning on being here, and I make my apologies, his apologies. His grandson was born yesterday, late afternoon, so that, this morning, that's where he is, is he preferred to be a granddad rather than...
He made an excellent choice.
Yeah, and I'm one myself, so I can, I understand that. Anyway, we appreciate the opportunity to come before you today and make a short presentation. The Water Authority is 50 years old, actually now, a little more than 50 years old, and we thought back last year, year before last, you know, there's a lot of history that's gone on to get the Water Authority to where it is, and a lot of it is, some of it is with members of the Board of Commissioners, and right here on the board too, and that knowledge is in, you know, Mr. Holder's head, and a lot, in Lindy's head, and a lot of people understand it, but it wasn't written down. So before we lose it, we thought it would be really a good idea, let's capture this in documentation, in writing, so that future generations are going to know what went on from the beginning of the Water Authority right on down. It's important to keep those written records. So we appreciate the Board of Commissioners working with us on this, and some of you had a part in writing this, in putting this together, and I think the final document came out right, very well. So with your permission, I would like to leave these with you. And I left those extras with you, and we do, if you need more, then I'm sure we can get more copies.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We appreciate everything that the Water Authority has done for the county, and as you said, this history is quite fascinating, visionary leadership, and that's something you don't see a lot of these days, and we are certainly reaping the benefits of that in our county because of it. And you've been with, how long have you been with the Water Authority?
For 11 years now.
Okay. Wonderful. Mr. Holder?
Roger, just for the sake of looking, on the cover of this booklet, which is very nice, and I consider one of the things that it could be most beneficial to Henry County in many years to come, this is in Tussah Hall Reservoir, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's where the intake is from the reservoir, the little house, is that correct? Well, the plant is sitting to your right from here. That was in Butts County, and it wasn't until '03 that it was finally signed, but we had a meeting with Butts County, I'll never forget it, on September 11th, 2001. We all know what 9/11 was, but we had that meeting at the Butts County Courthouse, well, about the shifting of county lines. That was Butts County, and many thought that the right thing to do was that this be in Henry County. Had nothing to do, this reservoir didn't cause it to happen, it was a, it was a public safety issue that created the need to address the county line. But wanted, just wanted to point out, that to me is most important, because now our plant lies in Henry County, and prior to that, it would not have been, would have been in Butts.
Mr. Bowman?
I'd like to make a couple of comments. I know that when I first moved to Henry County, lived on a dirt road, had a well, had four kids at home, two of them probably still in diapers for all that matters, late '70s, I guess, and I know that we could wash two loads of clothes and take four showers, we were out of water. And it, for me, you know, to turn on that spigot and good clean water come out every day, I mean, only once in a, every once in a while when somebody's broke one of our lines and we get a little mud in it, but I mean, other than that, there's not a lot of counties north of Henry County that can actually say that, and to have the supply that we've got and the hard work that's went into it. I've toured the facilities, and I think it's awesome, the job that the ones before us have done, especially because this has gone on for 50 years, in planning for Henry County's future and growth, and for the ones that were currently here. I mean, you know, that was, I was, you know, I was here in the late '70s, like I said, and we got, when we got water ran down our road, I think I had to pay for like three or four meters, because several people said they didn't have no problem with their well, and I said, I'll just pay for it, you know, it's just, that's what we gotta do. But just wanted to let you know that I, Lindy, I've known Lindy for an awful long time, and it's a great job, it is a great job, and it's a benefit to Henry County, and Commissioner Holder has said it on more than one occasion, and said it very well, it's not broke and don't need fixing, it's a, it's good authority that takes care of what it's supposed to do. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the board on this? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And no one has signed up for public comment. Mr. County Manager, anything for public session?
No.
Upcoming meetings and events, Tuesday, September 18th at 6:30 p.m., we have a regular meeting, the regular meeting has been canceled, there are no agenda items for tomorrow evening. Monday, October 1st at 9:00 a.m., we have a workshop meeting. Tuesday, October 2nd at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular meeting. Monday, October 15th at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, October 16th at 6:30 p.m., we have regular meetings. And understand, we have no items for executive session?
We do, ma'am.
We do have items for executive session? I'm sorry, I'm dashing the hopes of the board. I told them we had nothing for executive session, but it's brief, right? Okay, at this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel, and land acquisition matters. Motion by Mr. Stamey?
Second.
Second by Mr. Preston, all in favor? Reluctantly, motion carries five zero. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Holder?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. If there's no further business to come before the board, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Preston, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. Motion carries four zero. We stand adjourned.